All right, Dean, and good evening, everybody. The city secretary informs me that it is 5:30 PM, so I'd like to ask Mr. Morales to lead us in an invocation.
We thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us, but we ask and pray for more, for good health, wisdom, fortitude, understanding, knowledge, and many, many more blessings. In the name of our Lord Jesus, in the name of Jesus, our Lord and Savior, in unity with the Holy Spirit, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic, one nation, under God.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. Glad to have you here. It's time we go to citizen communication. Amanda?
Here we have Mr. Durempeña, 222 West Harrison, Suite B, Item 11 and Item 12, and he would like to speak in person. Let me give him a call, maybe he's downstairs. We can go to the next one and then...
Okay, let's go to the next one and then...
Okay, so then Raymond Reyes, I believe he's here.
Yeah.
Okay. 706 Nantucket Drive, Policies and Protocols, speaking person, first to speak.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Raymond Reyes, 706 Nantucket Drive, here in Harlingen, Texas. My reason for being out here today is I'm on one of the boards now for the City of Harlingen, for the Downtown District Board, and being on that board, I think it's a good thing since we've been here for so long, doing business here in Harlingen since '76. But there's a lot of other things that I think are going on within the city itself that I have been contacted and reached out to some city departments that should be looked at as far as different things on making sure the correct protocols and policies are followed and stuff, because we just want to avoid any type of issues that's going to cause the commission, the city, the mayor, and the citizens of Harlingen any type of headaches. And so if I'm not one to drag people through the streets and stuff, but I think that if the officials elected should go ahead and do the oversight that's required, just like any good businessman would do with his business. It's something that I do with on a daily basis with corporate entities that I do stuff for, and something that I do within my business and the things I do every day on a daily basis. So I think we're doing a good job, but there's always room for improvement, what I always tell everybody that I work with. So if we just keep working towards a positive outcome, even though there's going to be hiccups in the street or bumps in the road, as they say, I think generally we'll be okay. We just got to make sure that there's correct oversight in place, in my opinion, based on my experience. And basically, that's all I wanted to say. So thank you very much, gentlemen, for your time. Ladies, y'all have a good day.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
The next one is Mr. Robert Leffwitch, 909 East Parkwood, Stag, City Manager, Conflict of Interest, and he's here to speak in person.
Robert Leffwitch, 909 East Parkwood. I just want to start off, you know, we're talking about a couple of things I've missed. One was that I just want to congratulate the Commissioners who supported the TMRS move. I think that was a good thing. I think that's, you know, that's something that should be done, because here we are with a city manager that makes over $300,000 a year. Mr. Mesmer, you said that you didn't have a problem with it, but then you said you have a problem bringing our employees up to a standard of retirement that's only equal with other cities comparably sized with Harlingen, but yet we have a city manager that makes in the top five to 10 in salary in the state, and I just want to, I just want to ask you to reconsider what you're thinking in terms of what's best for the community. The other thing is, let's talk about the, what's on the agenda tonight. Sun Valley Aviation, you know, I got accused of being, supporting a monopoly back in 2007, 2008, and here we are with Sun Valley Aviation again and STEC. Now you guys are saying that, oh, we don't want monopolies, we want competition, we want to improve the service for people, we want to improve things for the community, but yet we're going to, we're trying behind the scenes to bully people into supporting STEC and that monopoly. And I think that when you look at that and you look at the Sun Valley Aviation, and Mayor, I think you should be more forefront with what's going on out there with Sun Valley Aviation. If you were to approve that contract, I understand that the FAA is going to withhold money from the City of Harlingen, because doing so, giving them the benefit of reduced lease, it's going to violate the grant assurances that the FAA currently gives us, and it's specifically for the runway extension. I'd like to see that come out. The fact is, is that Commissioner Mesmer, we know you have a history of stealing from a client, you know, you traded, you overtraded an account, you churned it, you settled. I wish you would come clean on that and tell us how much you've had to reimburse that client.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Leffwitch. All right, we'll get to Mr. Peña in Items 11 and 12, if he comes in.
Okay.
All right, so that, and that's all that have signed up for citizen communication, correct?
Yes, that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Item 1 is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 2, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none is our motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Is the motion a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. And asks to remove Item 2C from the consent agenda, so we'll take up the other items, 2A, B, and D, as in dog, through Q. Is there a motion to adopt consent agenda items 2A, B, and D through Q? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Consent agenda, item carries. So we'll go to Item 2C, second and final reading to approve and adopt an ordinance amending Exhibit A of the Ordinance Number 2018-1 and Chapter 18 Master Fee Schedule of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances Establishing New Rental Rates for Food and Vendor Booths for Market Days.
Yeah, I asked this to be removed and discussed separately, as I have a couple of questions. Is this dealing with the existing market days of the 501(c)(3), or is this the competing market days that the city has been forced to put on?
Commissioner, this is for the market days that the city's going to put on, across Jackson Street and across Commerce, on Van Buren.
Okay, thank you.
And West Street also.
It's strictly for the new section that we're opening up, the city's doing.
All right, is there any other questions about that? Can we ask the city attorney to read the caption, please?
An ordinance amending Exhibit A of Ordinance Number 2018-1 Master Fee Schedule of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances Establishing New Rental Rates for Vendor and Food Booths for Market Days Providing for Publication and Ordaining Other Matters Related to the Foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Opposed.
The motion carries. Oh, we have one, one item.
Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like the motion to bring Item 19 to the next item that we discuss.
Well, I'm going to ask Commissioner to, that we not do that, that we go forward with the budget items first, and then we go into executive, that we go to the executive session items before we go to 19, while...
But that's, but that's the reason I want to bring it up now, and I like to get a, see if I can get a second and approve it.
Well, it's not an item, it's not an item on the agenda. You can't move, you can't move to second it. And I'm, and I'm the chair, and I'm going to, and I control the meeting and the agenda. This is the agenda. So we're going to go to, we're going to go to Item...
We have brought things to the front in the essence of time, and I think that's a very important issue, and to put it at the end of the agenda, I'm disappointed, and I'd like to bring it to the forefront of the agenda.
Well, as I said, it's, it's not the next item on the agenda, and there's no, you can't move to rearrange the agenda. So I'm going to go, I'm going to go to Item 3, which is a public hearing to solicit comments from the public for or against the adoption of the City of Harlingen's annual budget for fiscal year 2022.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. Public hearing is required to hear comments for or against the city's proposed budget for fiscal year 2022. This gives the citizens an opportunity to voice their comments on the proposed budget. The proposed budget was filed with the city secretary as required by law. In addition, the electronic version has been posted on the city's website as required. You can open it up for a public hearing.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against the adoption of the City of Harlingen's annual budget? All right, Mr. Leffwitch, please come to the podium.
Okay, Mayor, Commissioners, you know, we've got something on the agenda tonight that's going to affect, I think, possibly the budget. So I don't know that the budget is ready to go. The fact is, is that our city attorney and his law firm has been making, you know, a half million to a million dollars a year on the taxpayers' expense, and I think that, I haven't seen the budget adjusted for the reduction in his fees, and I'd like to see that, what the amount is, what the total amount was with all the budget amendments that we've seen throughout the last, the last budgets, so that we know what the new budget is, because you're fixing to set a tax rate tonight, and if I'm correct, a half million dollars reduction in the budget could affect whether you raise taxes or you don't, because if $500,000 is the new property tax levy, and there's going to be a half million dollar savings and go into an interim city attorney, I don't think the budget's ready to be approved. Thank you.
All right, is anyone, anyone else would like to speak for or against the proposed budget?
Good afternoon. In continuing on that vein, first, I'm very thankful to this commission for allowing for the nine holes that are adjacent to the freeway to be fully opened again, but during the course of July in particular, late June, there were certainly a lot of figures bandied about, and as Commissioner Pettis and others pointed out, just because a certain amount is budgeted, not the entire amount, may necessarily need to be expended. And so I'm a golfer, and I think it's a good learning sport, but one of the things that y'all have been able to do is even though this is the poorest county in the nation, we're able to play this particular sport. And so if we don't expend all that money that's been budgeted to bring the extra four holes or five that were closed to par, let's say, that's savings, and so we're not trying to spend all your money, is frankly what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against the adoption of the City of Harlingen's annual budget? Is there anyone? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Go to Item 4, which is consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, adopting the City of Harlingen's budget for fiscal year 2022 by record vote.
Okay, I'll quickly, hello, Mayor, City Commissioners, I'll quickly go through the manager's proposed annual budget. We briefly outlined it in some PowerPoints. Our estimated fund balance beginning of the year at 9:30 2021 is estimated at 23,449,185. Our proposed revenues are at $49,778,844, and our proposed expenditures total 51,637,665 for a revenues under expenditures of 1.9 million, bringing our estimated fund balance at the end of 9:30 2022 to $21,593,64, which equates to about 153 days of operations. Some of our budget goals for fiscal year 2022 is to maintain streets. We allotted $2.5 million budgeted for street maintenance, also a purchase of a street sweeper, provide for the construction of speed humps where they are necessary, drainage improvements. We also are funding city drainage improvements, leveraging grants, enhancing public safety through the purchase of some data recovery servers at the police operations, upgrade to QAP-NAS servers, and purchase of equipment for fire department. We also want to maintain our current public service levels. We want to improve citywide level of public service delivery, provide restrooms in our downtown area, and provide lighting at the Centennial Park, and also to fund salary and benefit increases. We've listed out all the proposed non-recurring one-time purchases. There are some for police operations, police services for the QAP-NAS, as I mentioned earlier, some air packs in the fire suppression, as well as rewire station generators, drill field drafting, pit extraction tools. For engineering, we have a rover package for GPS, traffic signal maintenance, which will include a memory management unit for the motherboard and controls for sequencing on the new LED lights, and also traffic signal cabinets, upgrades to traffic signal intersections at the intersection of 13th and Business 77 and 7th Street. For street cleaning, we, as I mentioned, the street sweeper at $272,000. We have some downtown park restroom facilities at $300,000, some other items listed there. Public buildings, we have some improvements there, and parks, the Executive 9, we did also a lot, $160,000 in these one-time recurring fees. So this will total $1,585,458 in one-time purchases. We've also funded new positions throughout departments, city secretaries and admin, special projects grant specialist, MIS department, we have an MIS specialist. For police services, we have three full-time public safety communication officers, booking officer. We've converted eight part-time positions in the groundskeeper to four full-time positions. And health department, one animal control officer at golf course, we are including four part-time positions for maintenance workers. Sanitation department, we have an admin secretary and sanitation department, a solid waste driver. So as you see, our proposed revenues are totaled for the general fund, $49,778,844, the majority of that coming in the form of sales tax and property tax, and then franchise tax right after, after that. So sales tax is at $20 million, property tax at $19 million, and franchise fees at $3 million. Then you have other, other revenues totaling $49,778,844. Our revenues compared to prior year, we have $48,662 in the prior year, and the current year, $49,778,844. So we have increases in property tax, sales tax. Our proposed expenditures total $51,637,665. The majority of that, 69%, is at personnel services, at $35,762, and then services and charges at $9,480. Our personnel services are broken down, 41% is at police, $14 million, fire, $10 million, and all of the departments, $11 million, for a total of $35,762. That's a breakout of all the departments. Our expenditure budget comparison to prior year, we have $48,662 in the prior year and $51,637 in the current year, which is an increase of 2.9 million. These are all of our special revenue funds, they're all other funds that are not general fund or enterprise funds. So we have a beginning fund balance of $7,764, with proposed revenues of $24,215,600, and proposed expenditures of $23,562,282, for revenues over expenditures of $653,318, ending our fund balances for special revenues at $8.4 million. Our enterprise funds, our beginning fund balance is $11,691, with proposed revenues of $11,879, and proposed expenditures at $13,587. And this includes the municipal auditorium, sanitation, and sanitary landfill, arts and heritage museum, and the municipal golf course. And so we have our ending fund balances at total $9.9 million at the end of fiscal year Our internal service fund, which include our motor vehicle warehouse and our health insurance, we begin our fund balance at $8.8, $8.9 million, with proposed revenues of $9.6 million, proposed expenditures of $9.2 million, ending our fund balance at $9.3 million. And these are all the funds of the city, including general fund, special revenue enterprise, and internal service fund, for total revenues proposed for the year of $95,450, and proposed expenditures of $97,964,084, which, with our ending fund balance for all funds of $49,282,870. Any questions?
All right, does anybody have any questions about the proposed budget? For Robert, or the city manager? All right, if there are none, I ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance adopting the revenue and expenditure budget for the City of Harlingen, Texas for the fiscal year October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2022, in the amount of $95,450,962 and $97,964,084 respectively, providing for publication of the caption of this ordinance and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
I had a question. Sure. I just want to verify on the budget, nothing, other than what you spoke, nothing else has been added, like no, no additional salaries?
No, nothing's been added since...
Since the last workshop.
Since the last workshop. That was the last time.
Okay. The things that we added at the last workshop were the four part-timers and the golf course, but that was, other than that, that was...
Right.
Okay. And that was in the presentation that I made on the last meeting?
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's to be by, it's to be by record vote.
Record vote.
I oppose.
Just a real quick question.
Sure.
Sorry, I just picked it up right now. On the new positions, sanitation, is that public works? Is that...
Sanitation, that's an enterprise fund.
Yes, sir.
That's not funded by general fund.
So that position is, are we going to fill that, or is that going to be filled, or has it been filled already?
No, that's for next fiscal year, beginning October 1.
Okay, and then on the page 5, I know we had discussed this, but I never got a clear understanding on $300,000 for, how many restrooms is that?
Oh, it's a restroom facility. We need to calculate how many mans and how many west...
So it's just one?
It's one building.
Okay. And, and then, so what says here on page 11, we have public works is in third as far as the funding and support. What is support? Can you refresh my memory? What is support in, because they're, they're fourth in...
What page?
Support would be anything other than, it would be like finance, the grants, executives...
HR.
HR. They're the smaller, yeah, the smaller departments.
The smaller departments. They're just aggregated.
Those are considered support services departments.
Aye.
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 All right. Motion carries, the ordinance is adopted in first reading. Item 5 is a public hearing to solicit comments for or against the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2022.
The taxing is required to hold a public hearing to adopt a tax rate that exceeds a no new revenue rate, tax rate. The tax rate being proposed is .619849 per $100 valuation. This tax rate has been factored into the proposed fiscal year 2022 budget as presented to the city commission. Our no new revenue tax rate is .612828 per $100 valuation. Our voter approval tax rate, which is the highest rate that we can go without, without going first to an election, is .628713 per $100 valuation, and our current rate is .619849 per $100 valuation, and we are proposing to stay at that same rate for 2022.
All right, is there anyone who would like to speak for or against the proposed tax rate? Mr. Leffwitch.
Yes, I just wanted to say that, you know, we heard it's going to have the same rate, but we all know that when the appraisal district gets done with the citizens, you know, people are going to go. And you guys are, you know, I've heard Mayor, Mr. Mesmer, y'all are saying, well, it's appraisal district. Well, guess what? Who spends the money? It's not the appraisal district, it's you guys. So y'all need to, you know, for a no new tax rate, which we're not doing, because you've got additional tax levy revenue, and I think it's $500, Robert, can you correct me?
$500,000 from the year, last year, from the last year of the year.
Yeah, new revenue. So the fact of the matter is, while he's looking that up, I just wanted to go ahead and say, I appreciate the, some of the commission addressing some of the skyrocketing costs that I've been advocating against. I know there's some more costs that can come out of the budget. I know that you guys are doing an audit, and I look forward to participating and watching the results of that. So I look forward to next year. Hopefully, we can, we could say to the citizens, after 14 years or 16 years or however long you've been in office, Mayor, for real, we can say that there is not going to be a tax increase, because if you go with the truth in taxation that's currently adopted by the state legislators, we've had a tax rate increase for the last 16 years, regardless of what y'all have been saying, that we haven't had a tax increase in 14 years, because adjusting the rate one way or the other is not the taxes. The taxes are what goes up, the taxes are the levy, and for the last, at least 10 or 12, 14 years, every year we've added to the tax levy, and that constitutes a tax increase, as we're going to hear when you read the caption. Thank you.
All right, does anyone like to speak for or against the tax rate? All right, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and go to Item 6, which is the consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, adopting the tax rate 2021 ad valorem tax rate for maintenance and operations, together with the interest in sinking rate for fiscal year 2022 by a record vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Chapter 26 of the Texas Government Code requires the city commission to vote to adopt the city's tax rate to be a record vote. The proposed maintenance and operation rate for the tax year of 2021 is .512839 per $100 valuation, together with the interest in sinking rate of .107010 per $100 valuation, with a proposed total tax rate of .619849 per $100 valuation. A legal requirement has been met, and the adoption of the rate is recommended. The proposed tax rate is greater than the no new revenue tax rate. This means the City of Harlingen is proposed to increase property tax rates for 2021 tax year.
Right. Does anybody have any questions for Robert? If not, I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance of the City of Harlingen, Texas, levying ad valorem taxes for use in support of the municipal government of the city for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and terminating September 30, 2022, providing for apportioning each levy for specific purposes, providing when taxes shall become due and when same shall become delinquent if not paid, providing for publication and an effective date, and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
All right, we need three motions, three separate motions to be made to adopt the tax rate.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I move that the maintenance and operations rate be fixed at 0.512839 per $100.
three nine per one hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second, I move that the interest and sinking tax rate be fixed at zero point one zero seven zero one zero per one hundred dollars. It should be the point, the point five one two eight three nine. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's just, this is second.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
We, we have to do them one at a time, sir.
Okay, yeah.
That, those first motions on the M and O.
Yeah, I get it.
Tax rate, okay? Any, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. By, by a record vote, Commissioner Uribe?
Oppose. Oppose.
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries, item two, I'm, or rather, there's a motion on, we need a motion on the items, right?
Yeah, on item number two, I move that the interest in sinking tax rate be fixed at zero point one zero seven zero one zero per one hundred dollars.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye, by a record vote.
Oppose.
Oppose.
Four.
Four.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, and we need a third motion.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption rate of a tax rate of zero point six one nine eight four nine per one hundred dollars, which is effectively a one point one four six percent increase in the tax rate.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, we need a rec, we need a record vote, Commissioner Uribe?
Oppose.
Oppose.
Four.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. The second and final vote will take place on the proposed tax rate on Wednesday, September twenty-second, at the regular city commission meeting at five thirty PM, Town Hall, City Hall, one eighteen East Tyler at Harlingen.
Thank you.
Anything else on that, Robert?
No, that's it, sir.
Very good. All right, item seven is executive session regarding the following items, I, A pursuant to Texas government code, section five fifty-one, point oh eight seven, to discuss or deliberate regarding commercial or financial information that the city of Harlingen has received from a business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have locate, stay, or expand to enter near the city, and with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations related to project Tyler and project Tiger. The next items are B, attorney, attorney consultation regarding section five fifty-one, point oh seven one, Texas government code, if I legally advise and counsel in connection with lawsuit style, the number, Ruben Pena Senior, et al., versus the city of Harlingen, cause number twenty, C D one sixty-three, Southern District, Brownsville Division, and C, J C Garza versus the city of Harlingen Police Chief Kester, number triple A, number oh one, eighteen, three, twelve eighty-three, and D, regarding Robert Leffwitch versus the city of Harlingen, cause number twenty nineteen, D C L oh five four two oh, one hundred and third judicial district court, and on appeal, and thirteenth court of appeals, and E, lawsuit style, the number Sun Valley Aviation versus the city of Harlingen, cause number twenty twenty-one dash D C L dash oh two seven, three oh, four hundred and fourth judicial district court, Cameron County, Texas, and F, consideration and action of any percentage to section five five one, point oh seven four, Texas government code to deliberate and appointment evaluation duties dismissal or removal of a public officer or employee, specifically city attorney Ricardo Jane Navarro, and name clearing hearing. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Mayor, would you make a, a note, please, that I'm going to invoke my statutory rights to have item F heard in open session?
All right, so item F we heard in exa, in open session.
In open session, I have that right under the statute.
A through E, on A through E?
Closed session, that's fine, this one pertaining to my removal as city attorney, I, as an officer under the charter, I get to have that heard in open session.
All right, is there a motion to go into executive session then on A through E?
I, I make a motion to consider something out of its scheduled order. I make a motion to consider something out of its scheduled order.
That, that's not an action item on the agenda.
Well, I can't move, I wanna move something out of order, in other words, I wanna, instead of talking about this, I wanna bring something else up. I can do that, can I?
This is, Commissioner, this is necessary, the order of this is necessary in order to carry out what you want to do, and that is, you, you wanna replace the city attorney and appoint an interim city attorney, we need to make the hand, we need to make this handoff in executive session, and then you need, and then you're gonna have to take some additional action before you can appoint an interim.
No, I, I agree with you. No, I agree with, I understand that part, and I understand that, but I just.
I didn't under, then I didn't understand.
No, I make the motion because I want, at least, because you said earlier that he doesn't have the right to do that, and he does have the right to do that, to move something out of order.
Well, I think the.
That's the point of this.
It's the, it's the order, in order, before we get there, we, I think we have to do these other things, and I'll take that item up as soon as we finish these items, we'll do the interim.
I'm fine with that, but I just want you to say that, yes, he did have the right to do, move something out of order.
Well, I don't know that that's part of this discussion, but if you have a, you gave me the motion to go in executive session, right?
No, I, I.
Okay.
No, I did not.
All right, well, is there somebody gonna?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, go in executive session on item seven, A through E.
There's a motion to go in the executive session, is there a second? All right, we can't, again, I don't think we can accomplish what you want to accomplish.
Mayor, I understand exactly what you're saying.
I mean, I'm trying to help you here, Commissioner, and I, you know.
The, the thing is, I understand what you're saying.
You have to go, you have to take.
I agree with you.
You can't appoint an interim without remove, without removing.
No, I understand that, and I'm not saying, the point is, I understand what you're saying, I understand exactly what you're saying, I agree with you, but the point is, I don't like the fact how you were earlier just basically saying that, hey, I'm on the runs every, I'm the one that presides, so I get to choose, that's not the case.
You know, I'm, I'm sorry, but I do get, you know, I'm the chair, and I, and I run the meeting.
Yes, but there are exceptions to it.
And you can change, you can try to change that as well, that the mayor doesn't have to run the meeting anymore, but you're gonna have to wait till May, okay?
So.
Okay? So we need to have an executive session.
So, Reni, in, in order to, for, for Commissioner Mesmer's motion, is there, are you saying that, can we include nineteen in the executive session? Is that what you wanna do?
Actually, you wanna do that?
Can we do that?
Yeah, I'll do that.
But if it's just discussion, I'm, I just need clarification.
It's a consultation, you're, you're gonna get, you know, you're gonna get to appoint an interim city attorney, the sooner we go, the sooner we get these reports on this litigation, and the sooner we get through item F, the sooner you can appoint us an interim city attorney.
I understand that.
And then you can go into executive session with him on other items on the agenda if appropriate.
Okay, mayor, you know.
If appropriate, if you take the action to remove the city attorney.
Okay, go for it, let's do it.
But there has to be a, there has to be a hearing on that first. So, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll give it to you, second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed, we're, we are now in executive session, we are going to consult with our attorneys on pending litigation, we'll try to do this expeditiously as possible, and when we're done, we will come back out in open session.
Mayor, I'd like to ask that you allow some public comment on this item, since it was considered under executive session before, some folks did not sign up to speak under this item, so I would personally, myself, would like to speak under seven F.
Well, how, you, you didn't sign up, you didn't sign up for it?
Well, if.
And it's not, you didn't sign up for it, and it's not a public hearing.
Do we need a legal opinion on that?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to seven F, consideration and action of any percentage to section five fifty-one, point oh seven four, Texas government code to deliberate the appointment evaluation duties dismissal or removal of a public officer or employee.
Mayor and commissioners, Rick Navarro, as I stand here right now, I'm still your city attorney. I know that at the meeting of September first, there were two items that got on there, one of which had to do with our legal services contract, and I can, and I know that, that there was this impression made there that the termination of the legal services contract also worked to remove me from office, it did not, okay? I think that one of the things that, it's kinda sometimes not real clear, when, when we agreed to become the legal department for the city of Harlingen, when Rick Bilby retired, we, we, working with the city manager, I agreed that we would, we would try to do this under the existing budget at the time, which involved a city attorney, an assistant city attorney, a legal secretary, and, and we did work out something out, it's in the agreement, but that agreement involved me being appointed under the charter as a city attorney, and then a separate legal service agreement whereby the lawyers in the firm would be duly deputized so that they could prosecute in court, and then we would render the legal services for the city as to pretty much everything. And we did that since twenty sixteen, and we did it within the budget that already existed at the time, for three years, and we covered everything. And I'm happy to report that right now, today, we are, the Munich Court dockets are fully caught up, the T P I A docket is caught up, the contract and document review docket is caught up, the fire labor agreement was recently negotiated, is not up for two or three years, the police labor agreement was negotiated and is not up for two years, so you're not going to deal with that. Allison, of course, has been the lead covering the commission meetings, as well as other meetings, P and Z, and board of adjustment, and construction board, and all the other boards, and the reason we were able to do that is because in, in the firm, and it's not just the people that are here in Harlingen, Rob Drinkard, who's been with us, you know, long time now, Becky Hayward, John Michael, Allison, and now Casey, you know, we only do municipal work, we only do local government work, so when this agreement was done, we were the attorneys on the ground, we live here, I own my house here, I own my building here, I've been living here for twenty-two years now, okay, and that's why we did it. I don't do this anywhere else, I don't do this anywhere else, I do it here because I live here, and I'm able to do it here. But in addition to that, we have access to the expertise of my partners, who are in Austin and San Antonio, and now Houston, who do, you know, a, a lot of general counsel work, so if we don't happen to know something here, we know where to go get it, we don't need to be fumbling around, doing research and looking for things, we have the expertise in the firm, and that's what we've done. The last couple of years, the only thing that has happened, which I, was a bit of a risk when we started this, and, and, and we, we dodged the bullets on it for three years, but then we got hit with some lawsuits that were not covered by the risk pool, and that forced us to defend those, and the cost of those basically busted the budget, it's not general counsel work, it's lawsuits, and so that happened to us last year, and that happened to us again this year, and so, you know, that's what that's about. I had already talked to Dan last year, saying, I don't feel it's fair that we bear the risk of non-covered litigation, because we don't control it, I can control the general counsel stuff, more or less, I can't control non-covered litigation, I can't control when T M L decides they're not gonna cover the case, and, you know, we need to do something else about it. So, when y'all put those agenda items on late Friday, on, on, on the legal services, you know, I, I, and there was, and I saw the video, I wasn't able to attend, I was in the Mayo Clinic getting surgery for a mild cancer condition, and I was recovering for five days after that, I was stuck in, in Minnesota for nine days, okay, that's why I wasn't here. He asked my permission to tell you that, I gave him permission to tell you that. So, when I, you know, I did watch the meeting afterwards, and I, I think I was a little surprised to see the, the concern raised that our, that some of our work related to fairly controversial litigation was that we were not acting in the best interest of the city, and I, I asked for this item in open session as a name clearing hearing to tell you that I have never, ever, ever been accused of that, and to be accused of that here, where I've lived for twenty years, you know, really, it's wrong, it's wrong, I've been practicing law thirty-five years, I'm a graduate of UT Law, I clerked for Reynaldo Garza in Brownsville, I clerked for Filimon Vela in Brownsville, I was taught by the best, we are all, all the lawyers here, we are all guided by the rules of professional conduct, and we study those, and we abide by those. So, you know, everything we do has always been done in compliance with our ethical and legal obligations to the city of Harlingen, and I say that with some emphasis for this reason, as city attorney, and whoever you put here, besides me, doesn't matter who it is, the client is the city of Harlingen. Rule one point one one two talks about our obligations when we represent corporate entities. We represent the entity as a whole, we do not represent you individually, we represent the entity, and we work through you as intermediaries through rules of majority vote and other democratic processes, but we, we are the corporate entities lawyer, and that's true from when I'm talking to Dan, talking to the department heads, if we get requests from time to time for individual advice, you know, sometimes we have to say, sorry, can't help you, we're lawyers for the city, we can't talk to you about individual matter. So that's what, that's, those are the guidelines that we go by, okay? So what that means is, a lot of times, we really can't tell you. So what that means is, a lot of times, we really can't tell you what you wanna hear, we have to tell you what you need to hear, and it's not popular. And any municipal lawyer that, any lawyer that does municipal law knows how difficult that is, because obviously, we develop rapport and relationship with you individually. In fact, I, I thought we were doing just fine. I've had discussions with each of you individually on just different things, about the city, you know, what about this, can you tell me about that? We've always been happy to oblige on those things involving city business, okay? So I, I just, you know, this is a, this is a trust that we hold in this position, I've always known that we never hold it forever, I've always known that someday, you know, it needs to be passed on, but I want to assure you that the entire time that we've been the city attorneys for the city of Harlingen, and I speak for everybody here, and I speak for my partners, you know, we have done our dead level best to give you the best legal advice that you can get, even when we know that it's not always welcome. And we've tried to do that in a way that's professional, and to explain, you know, why it is that we have to do that. So I asked the mayor to put this item on, and I asked him to include the removal because you only got part of it right on the first. You gave us the thirty-day notice under the legal service agreement to terminate the contract, that part got done right. And so Dan, and within the next day, he sent out, sent me a letter formally advising, city commission has issued thirty-day notice, your contract ends. And, and, and that's when I said, well, what, you know, we need to, we need to do the, the other part. The other part is, you need to remove me. And you can do that one of two ways, I mean, you can just remove me, I've given you the language to do it, you know, or you put somebody else in place, and the implication is that I'm removed because you've now put somebody else in place. I'm not sure how you're gonna deal with the, with the requirements of the charter and the statute as they currently exist, which requires that the city attorney be a resident of the city, okay? I don't know what to tell you about, I mean, all I can do is tell you, that's what it says, all right? So, you know, Dan has been asking me, how do we, how do we do, I don't know, you know? I'm just here to tell you what I would like to see here, and it was, and I think it's been, you know, I've been thinking a lot, about it a lot, but I, I think it was, it was something of a, of a blessing, you know? I'm a, I really think, I really believe in the Holy Spirit. And I think that what I realized, watching the meeting, where I could see the discussion without me present, I realized that y'all wanna go in a different direction, as you said, Commissioner, and I, I don't think, I don't think I can follow you down that road and, and be true to our, our principles of how we think this should work. So you are definitely entitled to get somebody else. What I would like to do is simply do this in a professional way, do a handoff. We have lots and lots of stuff open and pending in the form of, we're caught up, but there's a lot of traffic that comes through our office. And it won't take very long for that, those dockets to get backed up. And so, you know, there's different ways we can do this. You can act today and remove me effective at the end of the month, like you did with the legal service, and we'll stay on. If you remove me right, right now, if you remove me today, one consequence of that is that the prosecutors are all deputized under me, okay? My authority to represent the state of Texas in municipal court, we don't represent Harlingen in municipal court, we represent the state of Texas. So if you remove me, then the deputization of the prosecutors falls away, so we stop going to court. And if you get somebody else in and get them sworn, then, fine, they can pick it up, but that's a heavy docket. That's a heavy docket. And, you know, I'll work with the city to, to do a transition, okay? Because I really would hate to see things fall through the cracks. Now, we're fortunate, we're fortunate in that the litigation stuff matters, which is basically what I just briefed you on, on closed session, is pretty much, pretty much done, okay? I think that we're this close to resolving the Peña lawsuit, we just won the Leftwich lawsuit, the thirteenth court issued an opinion affirming that the way the tax ordinances were done two years ago was correct. It's a highly technical decision, a little boring to read, except for those of us that keep up with it, but, you know, I'm happy to send it to you. The J.C. Garza is an arbitration case, which is almost completed, we explained that to you, and it just leaves the Sun Valley, and frankly, we're, we're in pretty good shape. So I, I just want to say, I don't want you, or the public, especially the public, and especially my colleagues in the law, to think that we mishandled something here. We didn't mishandle anything. We made a recommendation, you didn't agree with it, you get to not agree with it, that is your prerogative. That doesn't mean that we haven't acted in the best interest of the city, okay? That's really what I wanna make clear. So I'm ready to step out, step back, step away, but I'd like to do it in an orderly fashion. And I think that's not gonna be that hard, because everything is under control, really. Everything is under control. The Sun Valley matter, once Drinkard files his reply brief, that's packaged, it's sitting in the Court of Appeals, ain't much gonna happen with that for a while. That's the Court of Appeals, that's not us. But other than that, it's the day-to-day work of the city that needs to get done. So you tell me what you need from me, and I will cooperate with you to make that happen. But I do need to step away at this point. So just, you know, tell me how you wanna do that. You wanna end it tonight, you want me to, you wanna line it up with the end of the month, or what, what is it you want? I'd like to be done by the end of the month at the latest. I see you have an item for appointment of a, an interim or a city attorney. By the way, I, I don't believe there's ever anything as an interim, you either are or you aren't. You either are the city attorney or you're not. So they may not be there very long, but they're the city attorney. So, but I'll, I'll do it however you want. But, you know, and then we'll continue to do what, what we do, which is, we'll continue to be lawyers, if you care to call on us later on, or you want us to continue to handle certain things, we will, and we'll do it on the same terms that we have been. So that's my say in the matter, it's posted for action. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and I thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, to let me have my say on this matter.
All right.
Public comments?
Thank you. You did not sign up for this item.
It wasn't a, it wasn't a public item.
So I'm, I'm going to ask if anybody's got any questions for Rick. All right. Do you want to take any, you want to take any action on this item?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, you go.
I want a motion to appoint an interim legal counsel pending the appointment of a city attorney that'll help us with the transition.
No, that's not the, that's not the item.
Oh, you're asking about the timeline? I, I, what we originally said, you know, I wanted to fulfill the contract, that we didn't, I thought we were doing it, he had his whole-
I said we, I said if you-
Hold on. So he had, I'm, I'm glad you addressed those concerns, but frankly, you had every one of your partners here, not one of them said, you know what, you need to, you need to do it this way, you forgot about this. They knew what, what was on the agenda, they didn't address it, and I'm glad you're addressing it, because I wanted to do it the right way, and I, I thought you deserved the respect to do that, that's the right thing to do, is to fulfill the contract that was necessary, without there having to be any drama or anything else. So we did that, and I thought we were doing it appropriately, to give you the thirty-day notice, and it's required by your contract, right? So we did that. Not one of your colleagues said exactly what you just said, because if not, we wouldn't have made that motion at that time, right? So I would like to-
I posted right for that anyway.
Okay.
We never told you, you couldn't have done it because you didn't post it correctly.
Well, they also didn't correct it when we posted it. And that is your job, that is y'all's job, to, to give us counsel when we, we, every time I've submitted something, you guys have come and said, you gotta write this way, and you gotta write this other way.
Well, if I could have done it from the Mayo Clinic, sir, I would have, but I couldn't have internet access, okay?
Allison, 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 how was it all the time?
I mean, I'm the lead, I'm the managing partner in the firm.
I understand that.
I'm the one that negotiated this deal.
Right.
I don't even know that my partners knew the details of that, okay? So really, it was the only one. I just fully expected that I was gonna get the courtesy of being able to come address it directly. I, the items were posted late Friday, okay, unknown to me, even though I'd had several just conversations with y'all, nobody said anything to me that we're putting you on the agenda next week, okay?
I know when it was posted, but we went early.
At least you get the comments.
So, so I, what I would like to do, I mean, I like to just do, to, to give them the thirty-day notice, so we can get that transition.
First off, can I, first, I just wanna say thank you for your service to your city, you served your city well, appreciate that. And what you're saying earlier, honestly, what it boils down as a, as a city commission, we need to, again, when I spoke last week, I said that in the best interest of the city, that's how I felt. That is, that is, this, again, this is not personal whatsoever, because as an elected official, I have to do not, I have to do what I feel is in the best interest of my constituents. So this is not personal whatsoever. I mean, and as for your, as for, you know, your unfortunate case that you're dealing with on, on Friday, or, you know, I'm sorry about that, my heart goes out to you, I, I wish you didn't have to go through that. The thing is, this was not posted on Friday night, this was posted in the afternoon, and as I mentioned to the mayor last meeting, we have till Friday to post anything. And if this, it's any consolation, this was not something that, like, the mayor said last time, it's a knee-jerk reaction, it wasn't. I thought about it, I thought about it, I lost sleep over it, but then ultimately, I felt that this was the best decision for the city. And the way you're saying that, the best interest, this is how I felt, okay? That's why I voted that way. And the reason I felt that was because of certain, I'm not gonna go into the details or anything, but there's just certain-
It's on point at this point.
Yes, exactly. There's certain things that I personally just wasn't comfortable with, and when it boils down, the city commission has to have trust with the, with the, with the city attorney that the advice that they're giving is in the best interest of the city. And in this case, from other circumstances that happened, that we're not gonna get into, I did not have that anymore. I cannot speak for the other people on the commission, I can't, I can only speak for myself, and I said, that's how I felt. I felt that I didn't have the trust there, and I'm not knocking that you're a good attorney, you're an excellent attorney, but that, the trust is very, very important to me, and it just wasn't there. So this, again, Rick, this has nothing, it's not personal whatsoever to me, I like you as an individual, and I'm sorry it came to this, but, again, my personal feelings are set aside, because as an elected official, I have to do what I feel is best for my constituents.
Well, and that's why I'm, I'm stepping, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let it go too. I mean, I agree with you, in attorney-client relation, there, there has to be some trust, and, you know, after the meeting of nine-one, I feel the same way, you know? So I, I can't overcome that.
No, I understand.
So, and so, I'm, I'm out, you know, I'm out, and I'll do it by resignation if you want, but I just wanna plan for the handoff. I'm not stink, I'm not, we're not going to be able to work together, okay? We're not.
I agree.
So I just want an orderly handoff.
So do we.
Okay. So what do you want that to be?
My, my question is, are we discussing item nineteen and-
We're just, right now, we're discussing about-
We're discussing item F.
Cause he's still the city attorney.
And so the action, the action that you can take is to, the appointment of valuation due, evaluation duties dismissal or removal of a public officer.
Remove me effective at the end of the month, if you want, you know, and line it up.
What he's pointed out to you is that if you remove, if you remove him tonight, if we have any, if we have any of his attorneys in municipal court tomorrow, they can't represent the city in municipal court tomorrow. So everything is on hold until, so he's, he's suggested some sort of an orderly handoff. So if you wanna remove him effective-
So I, I make a motion to-
What would you suggest, any, for the handoff?
Nine-one, would this be okay with you?
The end of the month, like we did-
End of the month, or do you wanna make it align with October second?
Well, what is, was it October second?
That's October second's the last day.
October second.
Okay, fine, well, October second, make it effective.
Okay, then I make a motion to, to accept the resignation?
Well, to remove me as-
Or to remove, I'm sorry, I make a motion to remove the city attorney effective October second.
Senator.
All right, we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? I'm just gonna say that, you know, I am a lawyer, I do understand the, the job, and I think that the Denon Navarro firm has done an outstanding job for the city of Harlingen for the entire time that they've worked with us. One of the benefits of, of having the Denon Navarro firm is that they have a, a deep bench, they have a lot of specialties, specialties within the firm, and, and as you pointed out, these are lawyers that live here in Harlingen, that own a business here in Harlingen who work, who work here in Harlingen. I am, I am sorry that whoever had grievances with them did not take the opportunity to discuss those grievances prior to airing them in this, here in the meeting publicly. It was, a courtesy would have been to wait until he was able to return and, and to discuss these things with him. Still think that was very unfair. But, again, I can, I wanna thank them for their, for service to our, our community, they've done an outstanding job, as they reported tonight, on some litigation that they've, that they have successfully wrapped up for us. All right, so with that, is there all those, any other discussion?
I'd like to say something, that's okay, to that point, to the mayor's point, you know, we have terminated people that have worked for the city of Harlingen, and in one in particular case, we sent out the police department to their house and slid a, a letter underneath the door, all right? And that person didn't even live in Harlingen. And I always said to myself, what business does the Har, the city of Harlingen Police Department have sending on off, two officers out to a residence to slide a letter underneath the door, when that same employee was getting medical treatment, okay? And, and so, yeah, you talk about professionalism and the right way to do things, that has always bothered me, okay? And that was very well-known, and I don't appreciate that. We don't take, we don't treat, I don't care what the situation was, that particular individual did not deserve to have the police sent to their house and put a letter underneath the door to terminate him. That was wrong.
I, I'd be happy to discuss that further, to, to give some more details, Commissioner, obviously, you don't have all the details, but that's not on the agenda, so I'm not gonna give it to you.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, it's been great working with you all. You're all good people, you have great intelligence, great law experience, great life experience, and you have a very deep bench here in Cameron County and Austin and your other offices. Previously, the city, we had, we had a city attorney, we had to hire attorneys all over the place to deal with this specialty, or that specialty, or this case, or that case, when now, basically, everything was handled with one group of municipal attorneys. So however these guys wanna get a new attorney, we're gonna have to be hiring attorneys for all the different specialties and all the different cases and the subjects that come before the city. So I think they're gonna be really surprised, and I wasn't here for that meeting, but their behavior was rude to you as a firm and to you, Rick Navarro, as an individual, and that they publicly dragged you out, you being singular and plural, and they beat you for the public, and the behavior was basically downright rude. And I thank you for everything you've all done.
You always exaggerate everything, Mike, always.
Is there any other discussion among the city commission?
Comments, public comments?
Is there any, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, I'm going to move, go then to item 19, which is the discussion and action to appoint interim legal counsel to act for the city of Harlingen pending appointment of a regular city attorney. Now, this would be, if, if you decide to take action on this, what would make sense to me would be that you would appoint them effective the day of the, the effective date of the removal.
Yeah, yeah, probably.
And that would then give the interim attorney and, uh, the outgoing city attorney, uh, opportunity to hand off.
Correct.
Do we need to go into executive session for this?
No.
Do you, would you like to go into executive session? You can make that one.
Oh, I thought, I thought we were going to go into-
There's no candidate in the agenda, so I don't know.
Well, there was a candidate. I know that I spoke to Dan about, and you said you, I spoke to you earlier, and then you said you had spoken to him already, and you were going to recommend him as an interim, correct?
My point is, you can't trigger an 071 closed session. You have no specific candidate.
The question was regarding the executive session. I, I don't, the, our attorneys tell us that because it wasn't named on the agenda item, you can't go into executive session.
You can talk to whoever you want to right now, uh, here.
But my, my question is, can we move item number 19 into executive session?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you do what?
Can we move item number 19 and go into executive session on item 19?
The only way to do a, a, a sexy obsession on the appointment of an officer, a charter officer, it would be under 071, and you would need a specific into, 074, excuse me, 074. And you would need a specific candidate.
I don't think we need-
Or candidates, okay? So, you don't have, there's no candidate named.
Okay.
So, so-
I would like to make a motion to appoint an interim legal counsel pending an appointment of a city attorney. I would like to recommend, uh, Mr. Saucy, Mark Saucy and his firm. He's here. You all want to ask him any questions pending the, you want to sit, talk about his qualifications and that, but this is just an interim, it's an interim, it's interim legal counsel, right? I want to go out and find the best possible candidate for the job that will suit our needs. And there's, like the, the attorney said, that we, there's a lot of things that we need to do. I do believe there needs to be some kind of transition, some kind of catch-up, however that works. But I'd like to appoint that tonight so that they can get that going, and it's, it's, it's not, uh, Mr. Novato's firm will be the, the city attorney up until, you know, the 2nd. And, 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 but I'd like to, I'd like to appoint legal counsel that I would feel comfortable with bouncing off things. I've always said, I, I want an attorney that's going to be, who would tell me yes, no, but the right thing. Not, I don't want somebody that's going to listen to what I have to say or what, or do what I want them to do, or find a way to do what I want them to do. I want somebody that's going to do the right thing about the city. So, I, I think he's a, I've, I've talked to him. He's a good candidate. He's here. I'd like to indulge him. It's for in public. Ask him any question you want, any, uh, his qualifications and what they, that firm does. And, and as far as the, the, the living in, in Harlingen thing, our EDC director has been in, uh, employed by the city by eight years, and that has the same requirement, and he lives in farm. Okay? So, I don't like that, the hypocrisy of, "We're going to do things for this candidate and this, this position, but we're going to make sure we stick it over here, or bring it up when, when, when only gets convenient." Okay? We've had that happen several times. The man, the man's here. If you all want to talk to him. So, but that's who I'm recommending, uh, to appoint right now. I don't think we need an RFP to do that.
Okay, hang-
Wait, wait, wait.
Can you hang on just a second? We have a, there was that, that, I believe that was a motion to appoint Mark Saucy as a city attorney on an interim basis, uh, effective October the 2nd, 3rd.
The 2nd, that's the 2nd, that's fine.
October the 2nd, right. Was there a 2nd to that?
So, I want to hear what Dan's going to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, Commissioner Pettis did, uh, mention, uh, Mr. Saucy. I did get an opportunity to sit down and talk to Mr. Mark Saucy, uh, at, what was it, Wednesday? Mark?
30th or yesterday?
Yeah, me too. But, uh, so I got a chance to sit down and talk to him for a, a, a period of time. He has the credentials. He has the experience, uh, very comfortable in recommending, but as, as required by charter, city manager has to recommend the city attorney and the auditor for the city council. So, as required by charter, I am very comfortable, after talking to Mr. Saucy, in recommending Mark Saucy as the interim
interim.
On the interim basis, as our city attorney, um, while we go through a process, and I will tell you what that process looks like for me. The process would be to hire an in-house city attorney and allow that city attorney to hire a deputy attorney and a paralegal to have, once again, an in-house legal department that the city council and I have full access to all the time. But in the interim basis, while that takes place, because that's going to take some time, and in that period of time, we do have a lot going on in our community that we need legal support with. So, in the interim, I do recommend, uh, again, after having talked to Mr. Saucy, I do recommend Mark Saucy, uh, as our interim city attorney until such time as we find a permanent city attorney.
All right.
And that is my recommendation.
Okay, is, is there, the motion still stands? Is there a 2nd?
2nd.
All right, uh, would you all like, well, I'm going to call for discussion, but I was just going to ask now to recognize, uh, Mr. Saucy, uh, and Mr. Troyani.
Good evening, Mayor.
If you'd like to, if you'd like to come up here and address the commission, uh, please do.
I'm, uh, I'm very honored to be here before all of you, Mayor, members of the commission. Um, Mayor, I certainly have, I know I've handled some legal matters with you, uh, over the years, so, uh, I'm certainly familiar with you. I don't know that I know the other members of the commission very well. I, I did have the opportunity to meet with your city manager and speak a little bit simply about who we are and what we do. My partner, I, Anthony Troyani and I, uh, we have a firm. We represent governmental entities. And that basically is our area of concentration of the firm. Um, I was city attorney for Brownsville for 15 years. I have considerably experienced with, uh, the economic development corporations for both cities. Uh, the firm has recently served as city attorney for the city of Mercedes. I do civil service law, collective bargaining. Uh, I'm the civil, civil service attorney for the city of Mission. Uh, and, and basically, for the past 30 years, in one form or another, I've been involved in governmental representation. Uh, it, it was actually my pleasure about 20 years ago, 15 years ago, I forget how many, how, how long time flies, to represent the city of Harlingen in a case called the city, uh, Atlanta Lane versus city of Harlingen, which we tried for two weeks in federal court in Houston. So, um, I, I, I've worked with Brendan Hall, you know, uh, represented most of the cities, including the city of Harlingen on various legal matters through Texas Municipal League. But governmental entities, basically, that's, that's what we do. And, um, we have experience with all aspects, from everything, everything from economic development to zoning, to open meetings and open records. It, the, the entire, you know, I, I think, I think Commissioner Mesmer, uh, you referred to, there's a, uh, there certainly is a broad area municipal representation, and I'd agree with you. There's a, there's a lot to it. And, but we, we have experience with basically all of it. That's, that's what we do. And, and I'm, I'm be happy to answer any questions any member of the commission has as to who we are, what we do.
Yeah, first, I have a question for our legal team. Is the definition interim a acceptable legal term?
Yes, it, it, I mean, it is. It's, it's-
I, I'll, I'll answer that if you don't mind, Rick. It's actually in the charter, under, uh, section 16 of the charter, if, for the appointment of an interim. So, it's actually, they anticipated this may be an issue, uh, when the charter was developed, and it does call for an interim in the charter.
Okay, and so, since, uh, Arribay and Pettis put this up, define interim for me as a time span.
I, time scheme? I can't, I can't give you a time scheme. What I, what I-
I mean, are we talking 30 days to 30 years?
What I'm talking is, is the, the amount of time it takes to get the best attorney that we can get for the city of Harlingen. That's the timeframe.
So, so, I'm actively, we're advertising, and we are looking, and however long that takes, Commissioner. And the timeline is difficult to say. Like the commissioner, Commissioner Pettis said, we're, we're looking for the right attorney
Okay.
with the right amount of experience that, that will help-
And where are we advertising?
Magazines, TML, uh, and Effron here? Legal, come here, Effron. You can answer that question better than I can.
Are you advertising or not? TML, indeed.com, and our website, and, uh, we've been ready to send it also to the local bar association to get them, and, uh, by advertising in TML, the Texas City Attorneys Association, they're connected there also, so make sure to be there also. Uh, you're advertising as, uh, early this week. So, uh, so right now, we have one application to be received following the meeting.
So, so we're not just looking for an attorney. We're looking for an attorney with municipal experience.
Right.
That can do all the things that have been talked about.
Okay, and then, um, on number 19, it doesn't say, "What's the pay?"
Well, we are going to have to sit down, and I'm going to have to get a kind of an agreement with Mark.
Our, our government rate is $200 an hour, so.
$20, $20?
$200.
Okay, so, so we would hire, we would hire he and his law firm on an hourly rate?
It, it would be an hourly rate, sir.
Okay, and so, it's $200 an hour, sir? And does that include you and this gentleman here? He gets $200 an hour?
I think he's worth more than $200 an hour.
Okay.
But, yes, yes.
But, in all seriousness, but are we paying a sum total of $200 an hour for attorney representation? Are we paying other attorneys $200 an hour also when they're being consulted on something?
Sir, we're paying $100 an hour for a secretary in his firm.
Excuse me.
$100 an hour for a secretary.
I was asking him.
Our hourly rate for governmental entities is $200.
For the firm?
Per attorney.
Per, 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 I mean-
Per attorney.
Per attorney.
Yeah.
That works on it.
Okay, so-
We have a law firm.
Okay.
My name's Anthony Troyani.
Okay.
It's Troyani and Saucy. We have offices in Brownsville and Houston.
Okay.
We do governmental work. We do municipal work. We do appellate work. We have a deep bench. We know what we're doing, and we charge an hourly rate.
Okay.
And we do the work that, that we perform at a highly professional level.
Sure, uh, and then-
Mike, have you ever seen the bill from, from the bottle, Mr. Novato?
Excuse me.
No, I'm asking a question, because your, your line of question is inappropriate.
No.
Have you ever seen the bills where we're getting $100 an hour for a secretary, $150 or $170 an hour for an under associate person? I mean, you need to look at, look at what you're comparing it to. And they might just told you he's going to charge $200 an hour.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm asking the attorney's questions. Uh, so that, so then, uh, you will require space here in Harlingen City Hall?
We have an office.
We have offices.
Okay, and so then-
We, we don't require office space. We don't require secretarial. We have fully manned office in Brownsville and Houston.
Okay, and that $200 an hour, does that include your legal secretary, or is that another charge?
That's overhead. We don't charge for legal-
We don't charge for legal secretarial work. That is not something that we include in our fee.
It's, it's attorney time. It's an hourly rate for professional time, the same way you have an hourly rate.
And, and then, how would you expect to be paid? Weekly, bi-weekly, monthly?
Generally, we invoice a month, and we provide an hourly bill, includes the hours at a tenth of an hour, and it's submitted as, are most professional services.
Okay.
Okay, and you will receive monthly invoices.
Okay, so a tenth of an hour-
And we expect them detailed monthly.
Tenth of an hour, your, your billing in six-minute increments?
Yes.
Okay.
Mike, I know you, I know you care about saving money, so just to let you know, they're charging us $200. I have the contract, the current contract with the firm. They were charging us $250 an hour for a city attorney, $225 for non-equity partners. Senior associates were 210, associates were 185 to 210, and legal assistant and paralegals were 95 to 120. So, since you brought up, when we were discussing TRM, so you want to save money, well, we're saving money. So, we expect your support. Save it for the city.
So, so I will say that I did discuss the hourly rate with Mr. Saucy when we met for breakfast, and, uh, so I, I knew the hourly rate. I was, I'm sorry to joke about it, just trying to lighten the mood a little bit. But, uh, but I knew the hourly rate, and I'm, I'm still recommending Mark Saucy and his firm.
All right, uh, any other discussion or questions? Hearing, uh, there's no other discussion or questions. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, uh, all right. Congratulations. Thank you all for, uh, being there to sub in here and y'all can figure out the-
We will.
A successful transition.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8 is consideration of possible action regarding a provision or approval of economic incentives to Project Tyler. Is there a motion to approve the incentives to Project Tyler discussed in executive session?
Motion, 2nd.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, laxed sign. Motion passes item 9. Public hearing, consider an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow an adult business in a general retail GR district located at 1617 East Harrison Avenue, Suite E, bearing a legal description of Lot 17, Block 7, Hoskins subdivision, and lots 15 through 16, Block G, East Park Terrace subdivision.
May I say, Commissioner, good evening. We have a proposed tattoo shop that requires a special use permit. This is at Harrison Plaza, uh, real close to Beacon 77 and Harrison, just east of Taqueria La Mexicana. This is the aerial photograph. This is a Harrison Plaza. And there's a suite right here that, that's where the, that the proposed tattoo shop is, is going to be located if approved. That's the photo of the plaza, and that's the suite where the proposed tattoo shop is going to be located. Staff recommends approval, uh, subject to compliance with, uh, maintenance of the street parking, maintenance of the landscaping, uh, getting the proper state permits and compliance with all the requirements from the different city departments. This went before the planning and zoning commission on September 8th, and no one spoke in opposition to the request. And the commission voted 5-0 in favor of the SUP, subject to the list of requirements.
I'll, I'll open the public, this is a public hearing, item A, public hearing. Is anyone like to speak for or against this SUP? Commissioner, uh, Robert Lefwitch.
Mayor, I just wanted to remind you, I've heard some comments that, from you earlier in the meeting about you running the meeting, and in all fairness to this public hearing, I wanted to point out that we have been hearing about the city charter as well. Uh, the city charter stipulates that the meetings be run by the Roberts Rules of Order, and you are not authorized to deviate from those Roberts Rules of Orders. And had our legal counsel been worth their weight, they would have advised you that you were violating this.
I don't think this is a comment on-
This is a comment based on a public hearing, Mayor. This is a public hearing. And I want, I want, in all fairness, I want, in all fairness, to you to comply with Roberts Rules of Orders throughout the entire meeting.
You're out of order, and you can sit down.
If the commission wants to do something, or the public wants to do something, you need to comply with the city charter.
I'll ask the bailiff to remove you.
The bailiff? Are we in court?
I'm going to ask the police officer to remove you if you don't sit down.
Mayor, you need to, you need to differentiate where you're at. You're not in court.
Is there anyone else would like to speak for or against this SUP? Hearing now, I'm going to close the public hearing and go to item B, which is consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow an adult business in a general retail district located at 1617 East Harrison Avenue, Suite E, bearing a legal description of Lot 17, Block 7, Hoskins subdivision, and, uh, and lots 15 through 16, Block G, East Park Terrace subdivision. Ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen to issue a special use permit to Gabriel Vargas to allow an adult business tattoo studio in a general retail district located at 1617 East Harrison, Suite E, bearing a legal description of Lot 17, Block 7, Hoskins subdivision, and lots 15 through 16, Block G, East Park Terrace subdivision, and dealing with related matters.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, signed, the motion carries item ten. Is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to amend the city of Harlingen comprehensive plan, One Vision One Harlingen thoroughfare plan by adding an extension of November Lane east of Cook Lane.
Yes, Mayor, we have a proposed tattoo for plan amendment, and this is on Cook Road south of Mayfield, this is in our ETJ, one-point-five miles south of the city limits, and this is to allow, this will help allow a proposed residential subdivision down there, and the proposal is to extend November Lane this way, and this way, and this way, like I said, to allow this proposed residential subdivision. This is the aerial photo, so the proposal is to put this in a thoroughfare plan as a residential street, an extension of November, November Lane, and looping like this within our ETJ. This is the proposed subdivision, it's a single-family residential subdivision that needs this thoroughfare plan amendment for this subdivision to, to be able to develop. The property owner to the north submitted a letter in approval, and it's in your pocket, so whenever this, then other twenty acres develops, then that thoroughfare plan amendment will, will come into fruition, and you will have a loop that will have two entrances for both subdivisions. This, staff recommends approval, the proposed extension in the general area within the forty acres will provide another access for development along Cook Lane, the proposed extension on November Lane will provide a turnaround on Cook Lane, and engineering department is recommending approval of the request. This went before planning and zoning commission on August twenty-fifth, no one spoke in opposition to the request, and they voted unanimously, well, one abstention and five votes in favor of the thoroughfare plan, thoroughfare plan amendment. In essence, this is lines on the map that will help this subdivision, and will bring additional rooftops to our ETJ.
All right, I'm gonna go to the public hearing, which is item A, this is a public hearing, is there anyone who would like to speak for or against amending the city of Harlingen comprehensive plan, One Vision Thoroughfare Plan? All right, this is to speak for or against the thoroughfare plan, Robert Lefwitch.
Mayor, I just wanted to say that I'm against adjusting this thoroughfare, thoroughfare plan, because the fact is that you're, you're changing the comprehensive plan, One Vision One Harlingen ordinance. I don't remember seeing this posted in the newspaper where other people can come and, and ask for the same type of revision to this ordinance. I mean, you're talking about an individual, and God bless him for doing development, I'm trying to do a development in Harlingen too, and it's been over years since I've been able to even get a minor plat approved, but these people are getting the thoroughfare plan modified. I wanna know when this is gonna be open to the public so that other people in the community can propose their developments be, be enhanced by city taxpayer money with new roads and extensions.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against thoroughfare plan? Mr. Moore, please come forward and identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, my name is Dustin Moore with Moore Land Surveying, we're the engineering surveying company for this project. The, one thing to keep in mind is, the developer is paying for this road, so the part of the road being built currently, the developer is fronting all of that cost with no reimbursement. The, the future phase, the city's not, you know, obligated to build that, whoever develops that next phase, they will be paying for that road extension at that time. This is just putting it that, when that next twenty acres is developed, they'll need to extend that road. We had applied for a variance originally with the P&amp;Z, they didn't wanna issue a variance, they thought there was a, a better way that could be worked out. We met with Harlingen Water Works, Planning and Zoning, Fire Department, and Engineering Department, Fire Department was in favor because it did give them a turnaround on Cook Lane, which is currently a dead-end street, so that's, this was the plan that we came up with to work around that. The main reason for it is the property itself is too long, so if we just did a cul-de-sac, a third of the property would have been just unusable because it was longer than the city allowed for a cul-de-sac to be, so all of the cost is at the developer's expense, it is in the ETJ, all maintenance of it, it'll be a county road, it won't be on the city of Harlingen's, you know, list of roads to maintain, so county will maintain it, developer will pay for it, and we appreciate y'all's time, thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against the amendment?
Hi, Mayor, Commissioners, I've been to this neighborhood, and there is a ditch at the end of this area that's going to be built.
Could you please?
I'm sorry, say my name.
I'm sorry, could you please identify yourself?
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, I went right into this, Delia Gomes, eighteen oh six, North Flamingo Lane, I went straight into the subject, sorry. There's a ditch right before you get into this neighborhood, and I've been to this area where, right before you get to this new development, it's actually flooded before. The neighbors to the right-hand side, it's actually flooded into their homes, I'm concerned about that, and I know that Mr. Moore just spoke on this, and so I take another look on that, if that's what he's talking about, I just wanted to say that, thank you.
All right, is there, thank you, is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against the thoroughfare plan? All right, the amendment, all right, there being no one, I'll go to item B, which is consideration possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the city of Harlingen comprehensive plan, One Vision Thoroughfare Plan by adding an extension of November Lane east of Cook Lane, ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance of the city of Harlingen amending the comprehensive plan, One Vision One Harlingen, Chapter Two, Figure two-point-one thoroughfare plan, by adding the extension of November Lane east of Cook Lane, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Quick question, is there anything, like, we need to know about, about the drainage or anything in that area?
They have to comply with the drainage requirements that are, that are in place now.
But we have the most, we have the most minimum drainage requirements out there, and so to the young lady's point, that area's gonna flood.
We, we.
I think we need to get a, some kind of scope of work on what it would take to properly develop that with that many homes, and not, not create another problem like we have in Adams Crossing South, that we, we warned about, our city engineer warned about, and now the city's having to pay for that, and it's a brand-new subdivision.
Who's, if it does start flooding, who's?
Who's responsible?
Who's responsible?
Once we sign off on it, Mr. Lizardo is not paying for any of those improvements that are done, cost me for me, that's a brand-new subdivision, and they came here and tried to get that, they got it approved, just like this.
So who's responsible for that?
All, all they have to do is comply with the requirements that we have in the books today, we, last year, we went through the subdivision process, and we, the city commission upgraded the, the drainage requirements, so this subdivision falls under that, so as long as they comply with the requirements that we have in the books today.
Which are minimum.
Well, that's one way of saying it.
I'd like to ask Mr. Moore if he, if he wants to respond to this issue about the drainage.
So we are, there is that, there is a ditch currently in the southwest corner that drains down to the Arroyo, we are extending that ditch across the entire south boundary of the property to accommodate the additional runoff from this side and the north twenty acres, we are meeting city's requirements, the detention requirements, we're, because we're excavating the whole ditch, we're greatly.
Sir, is it a five-year plan, ten-year plan, or what?
Detention is greater than the twenty-five-year design, and all of the storm sewers are designed for the ten-year storm per the city and the county's requirement.
Right, but, but, which is the minimum, because most cities are going through a fifty-year plan, correct, which is what we proposed, what our city engineer had recommended, and it got shut down.
There's some, I would disagree, very few cities have a storm sewer size for a fifty-year storm, detention, absolutely.
Where's that guy who's here that does all the drainage stuff, I think he would answer that.
In Hidalgo County and in other cities, a fifty-year detention, yes, that is a standard in Hidalgo County, the storm sewer, I would argue there are not.
Are you aware of the developer I'm talking about that's brand-new on Vincent Road?
Yes, yes, sir, I'm aware of which one it is.
Brand-new subdivision, two-hundred thousand-plus-dollar homes, and they haven't been in there a year, and they got flooded in, and they warned us about it, they told us exactly what was gonna happen, we signed off on it, and now the city's having to pay for all those improvements, and it's costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? I don't want any future development of this size, this caliber, to, to go through without doing our homework and making sure that we have done everything possible for that not to happen again.
Would it be, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
I agree completely with that, we do not wanna design or build a subdivision that is going to have problems or negatively impact anyone else. As I said, the detention is sized larger than the minimum, the storm drains are sized for what is called for the city and county. There, again, I do believe there's a misunderstanding when we talk detention pond sizing versus storm drain sizing, and that fifty-year is the detention pond sizing, it is not the storm sewer.
It's the time that the water gets to flow, right? Given it time, because it'll overload our system. I got very well educated in the last few storms we had, unfortunately, they were in my district, and Mr. Carlos Sanchez was very good about explaining in plain English, you know, that, you know, the water comes down at a certain rate, and it can only, whether it's the pipes this big or this big, we have to allow that, we have to put that water somewhere to hold, like, like we did on Matizuma and, and behind there, and those big forty-acre tracks, right? We have something like that similar that's gonna allow that water in an event of that kind of rain event, which are happening more and more, then I'm all for it, because it gives the water time to sit somewhere, so it doesn't vote with the neighbors.
And that, you're talking detention, and we are providing that on the south end greater than the minimum requirement.
I would, I would say, again, this is just me, it's up to what you guys, but I would say, let's maybe table this, just so we can get some more information.
I'll second that.
Because, okay, I make a motion to table.
How much is that gonna cost you?
What's that, sir?
The delay.
The, the thoroughfare map amendment after this, then the plat comes through, so this has no bearing on the approval or denial of the plat, these are two, we need this to do the plat, but you can do this and still deny the plat, that's not going to affect that. In addition, so talking about the.
I wish that question would have been asked of the people in Adams Crossing South, how much it was gonna cost them out of their pocket in their homes when their homes got flooded, I wish that question would have been asked, and it wasn't.
I understand that it might cost you.
I will second your motion.
I understand that it might cost you a little bit more because of the delay, like the mayor suggested, but I'm more concerned of what's gonna cost the possible future owners of that house, of that subdivision when they have flood damage and stuff to their house, so I would prefer, I'm not denying it or anything, I would prefer just to table it, because I would like to get some more information, because when it comes to drainage, I don't like, we are already in a very, not in a good situation, especially with the drainage policy that Javier mentioned, and that's something that I want, I would like to change, because I think this minimum standard's hard engine's better than that.
But this, but this aspect of, this aspect doesn't, it doesn't address the drainage, that comes at a different, that comes at a different time.
In regards to having to fix Adams Crossing, this is not in the city, this is in the county, so any, anything that would have to be done, it would be Cameron County versus the city. Additionally, if this doesn't get approved, you'll never see the plat come, so if this doesn't happen, subdivision's off, because they need this in order for the plat to even be viable to come to you to review, so.
Against her, I'm just not in favor of building anything that's gonna be substandard or potential.
I agree what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, I'm not against, I'm not saying against it, all I want is just a little bit more of information, we can put it on the next agenda, and if I get the information, then boom, you got, again, I'm not telling you no, all I'm just saying is, I would just want a little bit more information, and that's it, that's all I'm asking, I'm, I'm not saying that, no, you know, you're not gonna get, no, that's not what I'm saying.
Go ahead, Mike, make your motion.
I make a motion to table for more info.
Second.
All right, motion to table, a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, signed. All right, motion carries item eleven, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to amend the city of Harlingen code of ordinances, Chapter one-eleven, Article ten, sign regulations modifying references to political signs or removing all references to on-premise and off-premise signs that are content-based and convert to form-based regulations.
Yes, Mayor, this is the, the ordinance that has been under discussion for, for some time, the major change with this proposed ordinance is that we're doing away with the on-premise and off-premise, so to give you an example, we have a central plumbing and electric new business coming in on seventeen, seventeen-ten East Tyler, so with this building, they, based on the length of the building, they, they get a sign allotment for the business, they could choose with their sign allotment to install a large digital sign where they could have their logo, they could have pictures of their products, or advertise, and this is hypothetical, it's that, that doesn't mean that they're planning to do this, but also they could potentially advertise other businesses in this digital sign if, if they go that route, so that's, this ordinance will allow, will allow that, there's no more on-premise, off-premise in the whole, in the whole ordinance. It has a, we're doing away with the distance requirements to other, we're also going to billboards, and so right now we have distance requirements along the same side of the street, we're, we're removing that, that we're going with, with a radius, which is more restrictive for new, new billboards, and based on, based on the size is you have the, the radius. So, to give you an example, right now, today, if Lamar Advertising comes in for a permit for a large billboard at the corner of Dilworth and the Expressway in this property here, under the existing ordinance, they will be eligible to get a, a new, a new billboard because they, they will meet the distance requirements along the same, same size, same side of the Expressway. In this proposed new ordinance, they will not be able to get a permit because we're, we're going by the radius, and there's an existing billboard on the other side of the Expressway, so for, as far as billboards, this is more restrictive than, than what we, what we have in the books today, which will limit any new, new, new billboards coming into the city. We have regulations regarding political signs, that if it's thirty-six square feet or larger, that you have to get a permit, so we're doing away with that, so all we're gonna regulate for political signs is, they cannot be in the right of way, or if they're in private property, but it's a traffic hazard, that's the only time we will regulate political signs. In the ordinance, there's provisions to allow portable signs if, if secured to the ground, but the manufacturers of this type of signs, those, these type of signs are not designed to be secured to the ground, so we're doing away with that provision that we will allow them if, if secured to the ground, and we, we did a sweep a few months ago, and most of these portable signs are, are gone from the city. And also, we added a provision to allow more signage for properties along the Expressway, we were getting a lot of requests from businesses along the Expressway for, for more signage, as you know, the, there's, you have high speeds, high speeds along, along the Expressway, so businesses need to have a big sign so that you can see the business from far away and exit in the right ramp to access the, the business, so we're proposing to add square footages to properties within six-hundred feet of the Expressway to give them more, more signage if they want to. This went before the planning and zoning commission on September eighth, and they approved it with a five-to-zero vote.
Javier, can you, on, on the, the slide where it shows the Expressway, and you went from the distance on each side, now you're doing.
Yes, right, right now the ordinance is based on distance along the same side of the Expressway.
So, what is the problem with Lamar coming in and putting another sign on the other side of the Expressway? What is, what's the concern?
Well, the purpose is to, to have less billboards, right? So, the proposed change is to go to a radius of fifteen-hundred, if, if there's a billboard within a fifteen-hundred-foot radius, we will not allow, so this does more restrictive than what we have right now.
So my question is, why are we, why do we wanna restrict that? Is there?
Well, we're also allowing, within six-hundred feet of the Expressway, signage for the building, right?
Yes.
This is strictly billboards.
Strictly.
So we're trying to limit the number of billboards that are along the expressway, within a fifteen hundred foot radius of each other.
And why is that?
Just try to limit the number of billboards. I think, one of the things, one of the reasons that we have the sign ordinance is to limit sign clutter, if you will, along our streets. And I think that would be the same along the expressway, even though we're giving them more. We're doing, right now the sign ordinance allows them to have three square feet, right? Three square feet for per frontage of building frontage, right? And now within six hundred feet of the expressway, you, you can have on your building up to six square feet per building frontage and any frontage that fronts a, a, a street. So they're going to be allowed to have a much larger sign within six hundred feet of the expressway. Uh, this is strictly for billboards. Now, we, we can leave the billboards on the same side of the expressway as is and amend the ordinance that we're presenting, uh, we're just going to have more billboards.
Okay, so I, I guess, Michael, I still don't understand, so is having too many billbo, I'm, we still have a distance restriction on each side right now, correct? So we, we're not going to get that clutter that is trying to be presented here, are we? Because you still have the one where it says whatever scratch kitchen, I can't read that.
Cheddar's.
So right now if Lamar wanted, whoever wanted to come in and put another billboard, they can do it. There's still a distance restriction between those two. So where would the clutter be in and, and again, I'm just trying to figure out what's wrong with a couple, I can see you don't, we don't want too many signs.
Yeah, and, and I think what, what we were doing, we were aiming towards like Tyler and Harrison, those billboards along Tyler and Harrison. And so we just made an ordinance that was all-inclusive of the areas. Now, if, if you want to allow them on the same side of the expressway, I would ask that we specify along the expressway only.
I think another reason, Commissioner, was because billboards are going to electrical or, or digital signs now and that would eliminate having so many of them close to each other. Because a billboard cannot be digital. And so the, the P and Z also felt that that might eliminate a lot of the glare, especially at night if you're driving through there. So that's one, another reason why they chose to do that. But we can leave it so it's just, uh, instead of a radius, you can just have the, the lateral distance.
We can leave it the way it is, but I would ask that it be limited only to the expressway so that we keep the fifteen hundred foot radius along Tyler and Harrison and some of the other streets.
So that right there is the expressway or is that?
That's the expressway, yes. That's the expressway.
Okay.
You know, Frank, I, I don't know what year you were born, but in the, like, sixty-sixth, President Johnson's wife, Lady Bird, I don't know her real name, I just know her as Lady Bird. She had a national fit over signs, billboards, advertising. And I, I remember, I remember all the magazine articles. So she was the one that implemented getting rid of signs and billboards and putting in restrictions.
And, and I, I get that, but we already have restrictions, I don't understand why we're adding more to, uh, I think, an already good, um, ordinance that we have right now. I just think we're imposing and.
So we can leave it at, as is along the expressway, but if you, I think, if you would allow us to leave the fifteen hundred foot radius along the other, like Tyler and Harrison.
Yeah.
So that we don't, we don't have a lot of clutter.
That I can agree, that I get, because down, up and down Tyler.
Between now and the second reading, we can make that change.
Okay, if you don't mind.
No.
Yes, we can do that.
We're, I think, I think we're okay with that. I think we're more focused on the Tyler and Harrison, we're just trying to do a catch-all.
And I agree.
Okay. Um, any other questions where we go to, for Javier before we go to the public hearing? Go to A, public hearing, is anyone who likes to speak for or against, uh, the amendment to the ordinance? I believe Mr. Peña signed up to speak for the, speak on this item, so I'll call on him now.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, um.
Mr. Ruben Peña, State Attorney.
Ruben Peña, uh, I have my office is at two twenty-two West Harrison. And I appreciate the city's cooperation in developing, uh, what I feel is, uh, an answer to our First Amendment question in regards to the sign that we actually, uh, we actually erected on, uh, uh, next to the building. Uh, and I won't go into any details other than the fact that, uh, I would ask you to go ahead and, and with the, uh, minor adjustments that, that you go ahead and, and pass this particular ordinance. And because of the time limitations, I will re yield the rest of my time. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you.
Gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. Peña. Anyone else who'd like to speak for or against the, uh, proposed ordinance amendment? Hearing not on, close the public hearing, go to item B, which is consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter one eleven, Article ten, sign regulations modifying references to political signs and, uh, removing all references on-premise and off-premise signs that are content-based and convert to form-based regulation. Ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter one eleven, Article ten, sign regulations, removing all references to political signs and removing references to on-premise and off-premise signs that are content-based and convert to form-based regulation and providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
So moved.
Here we have a motion, is there a second?
Second. Oh, wait, are we doing the amendment, do we have to put that amendment that Frank wants or?
Yeah, you, the motion would have to be with the amendment as, as stated. And we, we will make that amendment before the second reading.
Okay, so we can just approve it regular right now and then the amendment will be?
No, I would ask that you amend, you approve it with amendments as stated by Commissioner Puente and, and we'll pick those up.
So they have to take it back?
He needs to amend his motion.
Oh, so I, I'm making a, I want to amend the motion to include Commissioner Puente's suggestions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, is, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Item twelve, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter one eleven, Article eighteen, section one eleven dash five oh one, description and map of the downtown district overlay by updating the boundaries and map of the district to match the boundary of the downtown improvement district in section one eleven dash five oh nine, removing regulations regarding off-premise advertisements.
Yes, Mayor, as, as you know, we have a downtown district overlay that regulates, uh, signs and buildings within the downtown area and we also have a, a downtown improvement district, which is a taxing district that, uh, does, uh, projects. Uh, and the, the intent has always been that these two districts mirror each other. But for, for, for whatever reason, they, they do not at this time. So this ordinance is, uh, the purpose of this ordinance is for these two districts to mirror each other again. So the proposal is to, the, the area in blue is the area within the downtown district overlay that is not in the taxing, in the D I D, the taxing district. So the proposal is to just to remove these properties from the downtown district overlay so that the two districts will mirror each other. And that, that's all we're doing on this ordinance.
And this was approved by the downtown improvement board already.
Alright, I'm going to, is anybody have any questions for Javier? Go to the public hearing, open the public hearing, is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this amendment to the, uh, overlay district boundaries ordinance? Is there anyone? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing, go to item B, which is consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance to amend the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter one eleven, Articles eighteen, section one eleven dash five oh one, description and map of the downtown district overlay by updating the boundaries and map of the district to match the boundary of the downtown improvement district in section one eleven dash five oh nine, removing regulations regarding off-premise advertisements.
Motion to approve?
And ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter one eleven, Article eighteen, section one eleven five oh one, description and map of the downtown district overlay by updating the boundaries and map of the district to match with the boundary of the downtown improvement district and section one eleven five oh nine, removing regulations regarding off-premise advertisements, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion about the ordinance?
Motion.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Item thirteen, consideration and possible action to approve an A I A agreement with G M S Inc. for architectural services for the design and project management of the Long Sea Hill Destination Park, Phase Two, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Javier?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. Um, tonight we are requesting consideration, uh, to approve a contract with G M S, um, to conduct the services, uh, the architectural services for the design and project management for the Long Sea Hill, uh, Destination Park Phase Two. So the, uh, contract amount will be a hundred ninety-nine thousand, um, and the, um, construction, um, amount is three point nine million, um, let's see, three point nine, uh, yeah, three million nine hundred and forty-five thousand and twelve dollars. Um, y'all recall the construction, uh, or project was four point one million and so we're deducting the, um, professional services out of that four point one million.
Alright, is there a motion to approve the agreement?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Item fourteen, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending Chapter eighteen, master fee schedule of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, establishing fees for Tony Butler Golf Course staff to sharpen outside golf course ground moving equipment. Javier?
Yes, Mayor, City Commission. Um, we've been, uh, having this discussion with the, um, golf advisory board. And so since we bought the, um, the sharpening machine, uh, the real sharpening machine, um, we figured that we might be able to, um, make some money, uh, sharpening blades uh, from rail mowers from outside of the, outside of the city or outside of the golf course. And so, um, the, uh, we figured out a cost, um, and we, what we did was base it off of, um, the Austin Turf contractor, what they charge, uh, golf courses. And so, so theirs is a hundred and thirty dollars per reel and so we were going with a hundred and twenty-five. Um, and then the, the fairway mowing reels, I believe it's one seventy-five and we're going with a hundred and fifty dollars. And so the difference there is that the green mower, mowing reels, they don't take as long, uh, to sharpen. And so the fairway mowers are thicker steel and it takes a little bit longer, so that's why the difference in the cost. Um, but we, like I said, we presented this to the, uh, golf advisory board. Uh, we discussed these prices and so staff, uh, is recommending, um, approval of the ordinance with these fees.
Did you check with the insurance company to see if it was going to affect their insurance rate in the off chance that an employee gets hurt or gets cut or doing something by performing this work? That's outside of the normal scope of the work of when they took on the insurance company and their job duties?
No, sir, but what, uh, this machine does is you put the reel in, you close the shield and then you, you program it. So it won't turn on unless you close that shield. And so then you, you step away, you let it do its job and then you take off the reel, you replace it with another one. So there's no interaction with staff, um, in the machine.
I, I understand that, but wouldn't it be a, a good idea to check with the insurance company? I mean, this might make sure, you know, if somebody gets cut, they're going to think, oh, I can't cover that. But I don't know how that affects the medical, they have to get medical treatment.
I, I think, um, because they use mower equipment already and we trim and equipment. Um, I think thi- this, this piece of machine, from what I understand, has a lot of safeguards built into it. I think we should be okay, we can ask a question, Commissioner?
We, we've had, um, if I remember correctly, like the lawnmowers, they had a, a special kill switch that you wouldn't be able to start without something. And then whoever was servicing on this, this is years ago, bypassed that, right? And then, you know, I think you all took your progress and then corrected that. But that's, that's something similar that, again, I would just like, I mean, I don't think it's going to affect the passing of it, but I would like for you to get informed on just if we have any, um.
Yes, sir, we, we will look into, we'll, we'll, we'll ask our insurance carrier.
Okay.
One question.
Yes, sir.
How long had, when did you purchase the, uh, reel sharpener?
I think we got it back in May, May or June of this, of this year.
Took a while to get us, get to us, didn't it? And this is what they agreed for as far as pricing?
Yes, sir, we, we've, we've discussed it on several occasions with the board, um, and, um, they never really took action, uh, they made a lot of recommendations, um, because they brought up all these scenarios and so we, we thought that we need to move on to this. There's other cities that are asking us to sharpen their reels.
So, so Javier, how many times did it go before the advisory board?
Two.
Oh, here, here, I'm sorry, real quick question. What about, um, like warranting the work? I mean, if we're going to do a job, I mean, is there any kind of warranty? I mean, did, did you all take those steps of creating a policy of saying, you know, uh, somebody comes and does it, hey, it didn't sharpen or it didn't? I mean, what, do you have clear policies on that or discussions done? It's because when you start doing business, people are going to get questions and people aren't going to be happy and no matter, um, you, you could be doing a hundred percent the right thing, they're still going to be upset. But we should have clear-cut policies or who they're going, who's going to handle those kind of complaints and, uh, I, I'm, I'm very much for it if you have an, uh, um, an avenue to make money, I think it's a good thing. But that's, it's just, again, something that, that's the cost of doing business with answering a potential complaint or how that gets structured.
That, that's a good point, Commissioner, what we can do, we can create a form, an agreement, a one-page agreement where they sign off on it. And, but, but Commissioner, to your questions, sir?
Carlos, I'm sorry, I don't see, you can't see.
Commissioner, to your question is, yes, we, we explored different scenarios that, uh, could be involved with this. One of them was that initially they, they wanted to bring in their equipment where we would have to dismount and mount back the, the, the reels or the reels.
Right, right, right.
And we opted against that, it's, no, you do it at your shop, bring us a reel. And so we're minimizing that interaction, that, uh,
Right.
that step where we
Well.
do, let the machine do its work and give it back to you and you take it back and it's up to you to put it back together.
I mean, and to Dan's point, maybe the idea is you train the employee, you have him sign off on something and that may cover your, yeah, he's been trained the proper way that it prevents you from him not doing the right thing.
So we'll, we'll create something, but to your point, Commissioner, uh, so it was discussed with the advisory board on more than one occasion, twi- twice as a matter of fact, there was a lot of discussion, good discussion. Not, there was no clear, uh, kind of recommendation coming out of that. Because it was taking a little while, I instructed Javier to put it on the agenda with the city council and just bring it directly to the commission.
Okay, can we ask the city attorney to read the caption, please?
An ordinance of the City of Harlingen, Texas, amending Chapter eighteen, master fee schedule of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, establishing fees for certain licenses, permits and other services provided by the City of Harlingen as they relate to chapter, chapter thirty-six. Tony Butler Golf Course, providing for publication and ordaining other matters pertaining to the foregoing.
Is there, is there a motion about the ordinance?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Item fifteen, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution adopting the Harlingen Downtown Improvement District's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. The budget as presented on Exhibit A was approved by the Harlingen Downtown Improvement District Board at their September seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting. They are proposing total revenues of two sixty-seven, seven sixty-three and total expenditures of two seventy-one, three seventy-six as depicted on Exhibit A. Uh, we recommend approval.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Item sixteen, consideration of possible action to approve the Development Corporation of Harlingen, Inc.'s program of work for twenty-one, twenty-two. Rodell?
Good evening. Um, let me get my stuff situated here. So we've got a program of work to talk about, we've got, uh, a budget that goes along with it, but I'm going to do the program of work first. Um, just to give you all some background. Um, the city commi, the city commission and the board of directors last year approved a program of work that had six basic goals. And those goals included, um, investing in human capital through specific workforce development and training activities, increasing the industrial base for Harlingen, increasing our retail sales tax and retail, um, establishments and increasing healthcare facilities and offerings, advocating for transportation, infrastructure improvements and developing the robust entrepreneurship and innovation hub. So what does all that mean? Well, it means that we stay pretty busy. But we didn't expect, um, COVID to do what it did in terms of a lot of, um, impact on the small businesses. in terms of a lot of impact on the small businesses. If you look at the guiding principles that we've had for almost two decades now, actually since nineteen ninety when the corporation was created, this corporation is created under what they call the four A or type A type of corporation. It is designed basically to attract industrial and manufacturing type of jobs. It is designed for primary job creation. That is our focus and so our biggest focus is actually on large employers. Our secondary focus is on making sure that we have the transportation infrastructure that's necessary to support those large employers. And then we're basically a, a marketing and deal-making arm of the city. We will make deals with businesses to bring them into the community so that they can create those jobs that are necessary for us to increase our, our quality of life. During the pandemic, however, and this past year showed that, we needed to change our focus and we did and we did some things differently, basically to try to help maintain what we had and try to retain some of those jobs and some of those businesses that were hurting. So I'm going to go through some of that quickly, if I can, because I think it's important for you all to get that background. On workforce development, we started what was called, this is our second year, last year, or this past year, a goal line assistance program. Basically, we were trying to help the TSTC Foundation identify students that are within three semesters of graduating from TSTC so that they can get back into the workforce. As of now, with the money that we've given them, two hundred and forty-six students have received an average of an award of eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. Of those two hundred and forty-six, a hundred and eleven of those students have actually graduated from TSTC and most of them are graduating with associate's degrees in automotive, auto collision, biomedical tech, dental assistance, education and training technology, surgical techs and nursing as well. And there's others. But that's one of the things that we did. We also work with Texas Workforce, Texas Workforce Commission and Workforce Solutions Cameron to basically identify high-demand occupations. And one of the high-demand occupations here in Harlingen was the auto collision repair program. And so the EDC matched up some of the dollars that were being provided by the state through Texas Workforce Commission to the tune of seventy-three thousand dollars to buy equipment for TSTC to train auto collision repair specialists. And thus far, five, then the equipment just was bought in December of this past year. Five students graduated in May because they were already in the program and thirty students are actually right now in that cohort. Aside from working with TWC and working with Workforce Solutions, we've also taken it upon ourselves to reach out to our employers and do different job fairs. This year and next year, we're planning on doing, every other month, we're going to do what we call workforce Wednesdays. So we're going to do job fairs where we can try to bring different folks in to basically identify the jobs that are available and try to bring people in to, to work in those positions. We did that one back in August. In August, we had seven employers and two staffing agencies that represented other employers that represented a total of over five hundred jobs that were available here in Harlingen. In April, we did a virtual job fair because back then we couldn't get together and actually do it in person. And another thing that we're working on for next year and actually will be putting it into place really, really soon is a job board on our website. So employers here in Harlingen can actually get on our website and post positions that are going to be available so that we can try to really help them fill that need and fill those jobs. Another thing that we talk about is on, on the increase in our industrial base. Last year, we provided up to two hundred thousand dollars to Valley First Development, one of the companies that's building out in our industrial park area. They are working on a fifty-acre development. He has put together quite a few of these buildings, like shown in the pictures here, and brought in different companies. He's actually brought together about eighty-five thousand square feet over the last few years and well over two hundred jobs, two hundred and eighty jobs are represented in his developments. Those companies are out there on that list, actually providing jobs for Harlingen and other areas. In addition to that, we continue to work with some of the existing businesses such as Polisachi Polymers. The gentleman down at the bottom is Hares. He is, actually in this picture, he was working on a presentation to the Harlingen Manufacturers' Association on the food liners that he produces here in Harlingen for HEV and other customers. He bought Texas Threads, a company that's been here in Harlingen forever and has retained those jobs. Because of us recruiting him, we retain jobs here in Harlingen as well. So he has become more of an entrepreneur, not just in what he's been doing from, from when he started here, but what opportunities are available for him throughout the city. The two gentlemen over here, Juan Villafuente and Juan Zamora, are representatives of the labor union in Matamoros. We work with a lot of the Maquiladora guys that are in Matamoros and the labor unions as well to make sure that we stay on top of what's going on next door to make sure that we can take advantage of every opportunity that's out there for us. One of the basic things that we do is marketing and these are just some of the things that we're working on in the Choose Harlingen campaign. We're having the people who are actually here doing business, like Jose Gonzalez and Hares Sachi, actually do the testimonials. We do videos, we do print ads, digital ads and just let other people know how successful they have been here in Harlingen and how we continue to promote our labor force and all the other assets that we have here. Aside from that, we also leverage what we can with other larger groups like Rio South Texas Economic Council. We're a member there and all of their marketing efforts, we latch on to those. And also Team Texas, I am actually an advisory council member for Team Texas. It's a statewide organization that has over eight hundred members that goes to trade shows and trade missions to try to boost economic and industrial development in the state. And for us, obviously, we're working on bringing them into Harlingen. On increasing our retail sales tax revenues and retail establishments, last year was kind of an anomaly in terms of the pandemic and people actually working on expansions. There wasn't that many because a lot of people were put on hold. But if you look at the last twenty, almost twenty-two years' worth of sales tax revenues, Harlingen has continued to grow at a fairly steady clip. We're annualized at about three percent and in the next year, we're actually projecting in our budget, which will be next, a three percent growth rate. So we have been doing very well over time and I expect us to continue to do that over the next couple of years as well. We did something a little bit different last year, which we'll continue to do this year in that we hired a consultant to help us market on our retail side. Retail Coach is a firm out of Austin that puts together demographics and other information. They do mobile phone surveys to try to determine what the market is, where the customers are coming from in terms of the different shopping centers and they did it for the Bass Pro Shop area, they did it for Via Vista Mall area, they did it for the area off of Egg Carri and the Expressway and several other areas throughout the, the city. And then they prepare a lot of the marketing collateral that we use in our recruitment efforts. So this year, they did basically an analysis of the market. They determined some of the retail opportunities that are out there. They helped us identify development opportunities, in other words, land that might be suitable for retail development and then identifying prospects for recruitment. They help us with marketing and branding and recruiting retailers and developers and also some retail coaching. In other words, they give us some advice on, on some of the trends that we see out there in the market. They also go to different conferences. Obviously, last year was very different than, than most years in that there were mostly virtual conferences, but they were there. A couple of weeks ago, they were at Retail Live, which is a conference in Austin, along with one of my staff members and they were basically working for us and, by the way, that firm only represents us here in the valley. They represent other communities throughout the state, but in the valley, we're the only ones that, that they represent. And then in the next couple of years or this upcoming year, they're going to continue to update our data reports, update our retail sites, our prospect list, continue to be active in retail recruitment and trade show representation. We're also going to do a franchise workshop. In other words, there are some franchisees out, franchisors out there that want to be in, in the Harlingen area. We just need to find the, the franchisees, the investors that are interested in, in taking them on. And then also project management tracking. Some of what did happen last year was obviously TJ Maxx opened up. We did provide them with some incentives to, to locate in Harlingen. Reyna's BBQ, LF Kubota dealership, Little Caesar's and IHOP took advantage of our commercial recruitment program and Glavo recently, we agreed to help them out with the railroad spur to help them continue to grow. And they were actually recruited out here from Brownsville six years ago by me and at that time, they, we had entered into an agreement for them to expand their railroad spur. They just never got around to it and so they asked us to help them out and we're continuing to helping them out because they continue to add to our retail sales. Again, we've also got some property that we still own right adjacent to Bass Pro Shops that we're marketing. We haven't platted, well, we haven't recorded that subdivision, but we're working on recording that subdivision that can allow for some additional development adjacent to Bass Pro Shops. And our healthcare sector, we've seen the Neuroscience Institute come up from nothing, from an open field, which was actually bought by the EDC many years ago and then donated to the South Texas Medical Foundation and then South Texas Medical Foundation donated over to UTRGV. So this is almost open. The early college high school general education building that UTRGV is doing is also almost open. The EDC played a role in that as well. US Renal Care is opening up a second location and of course, Sun Valley Rehab has continued to grow their presence here. These are some of the UTRGV engineering students who are now actually working on the Neuroscience building and the construction. Other things that we've done over the last year is Valley Baptist Medical Center applied for an additional Texas Enterprise Zone project designation and we helped them with that. Obviously, it required city commission approval and then of course, UT Health, UTRGV Health continues to grow. We helped them with identification of some of the properties that they recently purchased for future growth and, whoop, let me go back. And Prime Healthcare, we talked about that in executive session, but we can basically say that Prime Healthcare's back office operations are growing here in Harlingen and will continue to grow here in Harlingen because of the action that this city commission took today. We advocate for transportation infrastructure. Recently, the port of Harlingen had an issue with one of our customers who's hauling fuel into Mexico, having some issues with Mexican customs at the Los Indios Bridge. Those three hundred trucks that are passing through that bridge daily were being diverted to FAR and to Brownsville, which is actually a reduction in, in the potential revenues that we get, generate from the, the Los Indios Bridge. But we met with the Cameron County officials and US and Mexican customs and we came up with a solution that's going to help drive more than three hundred trucks a day through, over that bridge on the southbound side, which will be of benefit to us. Because of COVID, we didn't really do a whole lot in terms of meeting in person. So I'm meeting quite a bit in Zoom meetings, as you all know. I sit on the board of the Alliance for I-69 Texas. I sit on the committee for the Border Master Transportation Plan and several other transportation initiatives that are out there. We also participated in an airline incentive program for Viva de Vos and in our budget, you'll see that we have continued to allocate some funding for continued support for Valley International Airport. Aside from that, like I said, we talked about developing that small business entrepreneurship and spirit and that entrepreneurship innovation hub. A lot of that has to do with us actually working with the individual small business owners and during the onset of pan, of the pandemic, when a lot of people were being shut down, there was people that were really hurting and we were glad that the city commission and the board allowed us to help those small businesses continue to operate as much as they could. These are guys and ladies that are your neighbors. These are people that you do business with and these are people that you go and shop with. And we were able to help fifty-two businesses that retained well over four hundred jobs and because of the funding that the city commission provided, those grant, those loans turned into grants and you've got fifty-two businesses that are very appreciative of everything that you guys have done for them. We continue to market in our Small Business Week and continue to help a lot of these recipients of those funds by helping them market their business and we're providing all kinds of different advice on how they can do that on their own as well as doing it on our own social media pages. Some of these were actually from the original HELP program when, the original HELP program was actually a response to the July or June twenty nineteen flooding issues, hurricane fence and some of the downtown businesses suffered quite a bit and we started a, a basic grant program to help them recover from that. So one of the tenants of, of our small business efforts next year is to continue those resiliency funds and continue to, to seek out ways to help out the small businesses. We have applied to the SBA for a community navigator program where we could get some funding to actually leverage our staff to be able to do more of this one-on-one counseling and coaching and assistance so that these small businesses have all the access to the federal resources that are out there. And we're going to continue to do that next year. It's not just this year, but next year as well. And, you know, we also help with the Kaufman Fast Track Training, which is a thirteen-week course jammed into a nine-week course that UTRGV puts together to help entrepreneurs get started. We're working also at UTRGV and some other entities locally to work on potential incubator projects for Harlingen. For our HELP program, we had the honor of being recognized by the Texas Economic Development Council for a Community Economic Development Award. We also were awarded an Economic Excellence Award for having a professional, well-trained staff that, there were certain requirements that had to be met and a board that attended specific training programs. Of course, we talked about Viva de Vos. Task Us is a, a back office operation that came in this past December, hiring or promising to hire at least five hundred employees, a lot of them remotely, but at this time, they continue to hire. Their count is well over three hundred at this point and we expect them to, to exceed that five hundred eventually. Qualphone, a company that's been around for a while that I helped recruit, has had its ups and downs, but it is on the rise again. They are continuing to hire right now. And of course, Texas Plating and Polishing Services is one of the companies that spun off from a Chicago-based company into a local-based company. So those are, I guess that's the last one. Some of the things that we're working on and that we'll continue to work on for all of next year. A lot of what our program of work is, and I know it's in your, in your budget or in your packet, also has to do with the strategic planning session that we had the, the honor of attending. We heard a lot of different things that were a priority for the commission, and if you look at the program of work, you'll see that that's being incorporated into the program of work. So, as that plan continues to evolve and develop, our plan will evolve and develop because we are part of you. What we do is, to promote Harlingen as the best place to bring your business, is try to match up with what your efforts are. And so, we're going to continue to do that. I'm open to any questions on the program of work. Otherwise...
Anybody have any questions for Radel? Before we open it up, questions for Radel, I do want to recognize the chairman of the EDC back there, Dr. Linda Burke. Dr. Burke, glad to have you here, and board member Mike Alex. Mike, welcome. Thank you all for being here tonight.
I know you're limited because of confidentiality and stuff like that, but is there any, like, anything you can tell us, like, about anything that's coming? Like, you know, I'm talking about, like, restaurants or retail or anything like that, like, that you can tell, just, you know, like, there, I want somewhere, I want something else to eat. Like, is there anything else coming or anything that you're aware of? Again, I know you can't because of incentives and stuff like that, you can't really say.
I can tell you that there's a lot of interest from some very popular Austin retail restaurants.
Oh, the one you mentioned before?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, actually, several of them, and they're looking at, actively looking at locations here in Harlingen, and so we're trying to convince them that one or two of those locations would definitely work for them. And so, they're working, obviously, they have to negotiate properties, purchases, or leases with developers, but there's some active projects out there right now.
All right. Any other questions for Radel on the program of work? If none, is there a motion to approve the program of work for 2021-22?
Motion.
Second.
Motion of the second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries, item 17. Consideration of possible action to approve a resolution adopting the Development Corporation of Harlingen's budget for 2021-22.
In your packet, you have Exhibit A to the resolution, which is the budget. Our budget is for revenues of $7,266,237. Of that, 617, make sure I get the number right, $617,105 is actually from our reserve funding, basically from fund balance moving back into our revenue side.
687?
I'm sorry?
687,105 or 617?
617,105. 687,105 is the number of other financing sources. The transfer from general fund is a 617. The $70,000 is a transfer from TERS to the EDC. That's an annual thing from the Harlingen Corners Development. Our budget has been very conservative over the last few years. We have been able to build up, since I got here to now, well over, currently, about $8.6 million in cash. We will have, if, once this budget is adopted, at the end of the fiscal year, still another $8 million in cash reserves, a lot of it for projects, for the right project to come in. For that, I commend the board and the City Commission for allowing us to pick and choose the right projects to fund. This budget has a lot of monies put into marketing, well over $400,000 next year, because we feel that it's important to get the word out even more now than before about the opportunities here in Harlingen. And we also have well over $1 million worth of additional projects for infrastructure improvements, basically for the development of two industrial parks. But that will be leveraged, if we spend it, it will be leveraged with grants from the federal government. And so, we're applying actively for some funding from the federal government for development of certain properties and then setting aside our local match for those. Those, the projects will also not only give us an opportunity to have more available properties for developers to come in and build, but also address some of the concerns related to drainage in some of those areas where those properties are located, which will not only benefit the industrial park, but the neighbors in the residential areas as well. Our administrative expenses are fairly flat. We're not calling for any additional staffing, and we're going to continue to meet our requirements in terms of the commitments that we've made to the different businesses and their incentive programs. Our debt service has been drastically reduced, and this is why we're doing more projects too, by the refunding of bonds about a year ago. We've actually went from, and we also retired $4 million debt, so we went from $3.2 million a year in annual debt service to 1.8. So, we've done really well in terms of our fiscal management, and we're just asking for you all to allow us to continue doing that.
Motion for an approval.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries, item 18. Consideration of possible action to consent to the execution of revised employment agreement between the Development Corporation of Harlingen and Radel Garza as the manager and chief executive officer.
Thank you.
Dr. Burke.
Thank you. My name is Linda Trevino Burke, and I am standing before you today because I serve as the acting chairperson for the Economic Development Corporation here in Harlingen. And the reason I'm here is to request your approval for the existing contract we have with our executive director, Mr. Radel Garza. On August 10th, our board voted unanimously to approve this contract, this agreement, with two changes. Well, one is a 3% increase, cost of living increase for him, and I do think it's important to note that he did not take a cost of living increase the prior year because of the pandemic. And so, we also approved a two-year extension, and it's just the existing contract he has now. So, there were no other changes to that.
Motion for an approval.
Motion of the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. All right.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Item 19 has been addressed. Item 20, consideration of possible action to authorize city manager execute a contract between the City of Harlingen, Genac Associates for architectural and engineering services and project management for the design of the Harlingen Multimodal. Friends.
Mayor, commissioners, good evening. Back on August 4th, you all authorized staff to enter into negotiations with the top-ranked firm, architect firm, Genac and Associates. Staff has been in communications with them, and what we have before you is a potential, I guess, terms of the agreement. Base, the base fee would be $340,000 with a caveat that if the, if the total cost of the project itself exceeds $5.6 million, then the fee would kind of grow with it, meaning, again, based on a 6% rate. The, there is also a reimbursable line item estimated to be at $150,000 in addition to the base fee, which is wood cover, civil engineering services, landscape design services, telecommunications, transportation consultant, and other specialty supplemental services. Based on a total fee and a projected project cost of $5.6 million, the fee rate percentage-wise would be about 9%. And so, that figure is more in line with what we've seen in the past in similar projects, and so, for that reason, staff is recommending approval.
Motion for an approval.
All right. We have a motion of the second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Item 21, consideration of possible action to select the highest ranking firm pursuant to RFQ number 2021-17, Performance Audit Services.
Mayor, I'd like to table this item. I think that I want to put this item, I'm the one that called for this item. I'd like to table it for now, at least for the foreseeable future, until we address some other concerns and see if we can come back to it later.
Okay. That's a motion to table.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. The motion carries, item 23, board appointments.
I have none.
Yeah, reappoint Eric Zehi to the EDC.
Wait, wait. We skipped 22.
You have item 22, mayor.
Ah, okay. Well, let's go ahead and do the board appointments, not come back to 22.
Okay. Jesse Gomes for Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeal to replace Ernesto Flores. Once again, Jesse Gomes for Planning and Zoning Commission to replace Daniel Martinez. Delia Cavazos-Gomez, Library Advisory Board to replace Tracy Gonzalez. That's it for right now.
Do you have anything, Commissioner?
No, I don't.
All right. Is there a motion to approve board appointment?
No. Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries, item 22. Just skipped over, consideration of possible action to change the Harlingen City Commission meeting of October 6th to another possible date.
Mayor, Commissioner, several of the commissioners are going to be at the TML Conference the week of the 6th. So, I'm recommending that we change the meeting date to October the 11th, which is a Monday, the Monday following the return from TML. And so, that's my recommendation, would be October the 11th at 5:30.
Motion to approve.
I have a question. When would we get our packets for that meeting?
For the meeting of the 11th? We'll probably have them ready by the 4th or the 5th.
When do you want them?
When do you want them, sir?
I'd like to have it on the 5th before I go.
You want them right now? No, I think the 4th or the 5th.
Are we using the computer program already?
Yes.
And is it, has it expedited the process?
Yes, yes, it has.
Okay. We'll try to get them done before you leave. All right. There's a motion. I need a second.
Second.
All right. Motion of the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. There's no other items on the agenda, therefore, our meeting is adjourned. Good night.